Mayor Angela Williams Graves.
Dear Heavenly Father, thank you for this day and the blessings and opportunities it has brought us. Thank you for the abundance of blessings you have bestowed upon this great city. We pray that you would continue to bless our city, bless every resident who resides within its boundaries, and every employee who works to make our city great. Bless the children and young people in our city, cover them, put a hedge of protection around them, and keep them safe from all hurt, harm, and danger. Bless this council, our city manager, and our city manager as we labor in the calling of public service. Give us wisdom, compassion, and love as we serve your people, and let all that we do glorify you. These and all other blessings we ask in your son's name. Amen.
(inaudible). The clerk will call the roll, please.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Here.
Mr. Protogiru?
Here.
Mr. Riddick?
Here.
Mr. Smigel?
Here.
Dr. Whibley?
Here.
Mr. Win?
Here.
Mr. Frame?
Here. The motion is dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the previous meeting.
Ms. Graves?
Here.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Norfolk City Council chambers. We're glad to have you here. Thanks for coming out this evening. For those of you who do not regularly attend our council sessions, the process that we will follow tonight, the first thing we're going to do is take up the public hearings. We have four of those matters. At the conclusion of the public hearings, we'll go to the regular agenda items. We have a number of them. We've got about 30 of them, I think. We'll vote on all of those matters in just the way they are numbered on the printed document. At the conclusion of the formal agenda, if any member of the public would like to address the city council on a new business or something that's not on our printed formal agenda, you'll be given that opportunity. But in order to have your name called, you must have signed a slip of paper which the clerk has made available in the lobby behind the council chambers before the meeting begins. So, thank you for being here. We do have one, thank you, one brief ceremonial matter. I see Steve Hawke. Steve, would you like to come up? This concerns Foster Care Month proclamation. And Steve, do you want to make some introductions about who else is with you?
I do. Thank you, Mayor Frame. This evening, we have several of our staff members and foster parents. On the far end, we have Lakora Harris, one of our foster care family service workers, Denise Gallup, our assistant director, Camille Campos Wilson, who is just one of our outstanding admin folks who's done tremendous work for us, and then Audra Bullock and Richard Litten, who are some of our foster parents that have just done great work for us, and we're really excited to be partnering with them.
Well, great. Well, thank you for what you do, and thanks for coming down for the proclamation. And I'll read it and I'll give it to you, Stephen, and see if you have anything else you'd like to say. It reads, "Whereas the family serving as the primary source of love, identity, self-esteem, and support is the very foundation of our communities and our Commonwealth. Whereas in the city of Norfolk, there are 211 children and youth in foster care being provided with a safe, secure, and stable home along with the compassion and nurturing of a foster family. Whereas all young people in foster care need a meaningful connection to a caring adult who becomes a supportive and lasting presence in their lives. And whereas foster kinship and adoptive families who open their homes and hearts and support children whose families are in crisis play a vital role in helping children and families heal and reconnect, thereby launching young people into successful adulthood. And whereas dedicated foster families frequently adopt foster children, resulting in a greater need for more foster families. And whereas we are thankful for the numerous individuals and organizations for their valuable contribution to increasing public awareness of the needs of children in and leaving foster care, as well as the enduring steadfast devotion of foster parents and those working in the public foster care system. Now therefore, I, Paul Frame, Mayor of the City of Norfolk, do hereby proclaim May 2016 as Foster Care Month in the City of Norfolk, and encourage all citizens to get involved through foster care, volunteering or mentoring to change the life of a child, and also urge citizens to recognize the commitment of our foster families as they lend their strength to our most vulnerable children in their efforts to help these young people realize their full potential, given under my hand this 10th day of May 2016." Steve, let me give this to you. And again, I want to thank you all for what you do for our children, for our city. This is a tremendous commitment, as we know, of not only time, but also love for these kids as well. So, thank you.
Thank you. Yes, we're back. Last month, we had a proclamation for child abuse prevention. This is the other side of the story. Sometimes, it's not possible to keep a child in their biological home. We depend on folks such as this to provide a loving, nurturing home for those children that have experienced trauma or for some other reason are not able to stay in their home. I'm going to ask if I'd be willing to say just a few words. Please.
So, good evening. My name is Audra, and this is my husband, Richard. And the journey, we've been fostering for about 15 months now, and I'll tell you a little bit about our experience. The journey to fostering started for me back in 2004 when CNN aired a segment on older children in New York in need of permanency in the foster care system, like seven to 14 years old that needed to be adopted. It's hard for those kids sometimes. And there was a little nine-year-old boy who looked into the camera and said to me, he spoke to my heart, he said, "I know I can be a good son. I just need to find the right dad." And I knew at that point that I really needed to do something, but the time wasn't right for me to do that until 10 years later in a second marriage in this wonderful man. And in 2014, we decided to do this. We enrolled in a seminar with the Norfolk Department of Human Services. And two things struck us out of that seminar is that, one, foster care is more than just taking care of children. It's healing families, and it's making a meaningful impact in our community in the homes just down the street from us. And number two, as we looked around the room at that seminar, the sheer number of adults that were there to become foster parents that had been foster children, these people came back because of a positive impact of a foster home to give back and make a difference. And so, this has been a journey for us that has been more profoundly meaningful and rewarding than anything else we've ever done. These kids, it's hard what they go through, but given the right kind of home, the services that they need, they can recover. And that's meaningful to us and the community because when they recover, they have healthy families, and they come back to give back, become social workers, like many of the people we work with at DHS, and foster parents.
And as Audra has indicated, we want Norfolk to do all it can for foster children and foster and biological families. Our community needs foster homes, and we need resources to support the foster care system. To that end, Audra and I are working closely with the Foster Care Division at NDHS, and would like to launch a new charitable 501(c)(3) organization, Norfolk Friends of Foster Care. Norfolk Friends of Foster Care will be aligned with and directly support the Foster Care Division of NDHS. We want to provide meaningful additional support programs for foster children in Norfolk, including extracurricular school funding, tutoring for special academic needs, enriching summer programs. And we want to assist with outreach and raise public awareness of the foster care system, the need for foster care homes, and the need for additional programs. Our efforts will show that Norfolk cares. We intend to change lives, and as Teddy Roosevelt said, "We want to do what society and government should do, which is to give everyone a square deal." A well-known quote says, "A hundred years from now, it will not matter what my bank account was, the sort of house I lived in, or the car I drive, but the world may be different because I was important in the life of a child."
Thank you. Thanks, Mayor. Thank you for those great comments, and thanks. Terrific. Okay. That concludes the ceremonial portion, and we'll move directly then to public hearing number one, please.
Public hearing one is scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving a land disposition and development contract with Ocean View Properties, Inc. for two parcels of land consisting of a total of 3.7 acres, more or less, on property located at 719 East Ocean View Avenue.
Vic Yerkovic, please. Vic, you're a proponent. Do you want to speak to it as well? I mean, I didn't know if you wanted to speak to it besides just say you were a proponent of it.
Public hearing one and two, Mayor.
Okay. Go ahead.
Okay.
Sure.
Vic Yerkovic, 1816 East Ocean View Avenue, Cottage Night Civic League. And I've brought a few members along from Cottage Night Civic League and Ocean View Civic League in the back, back here. We're in favor of this development. We want it to happen. It's good for the community, and it's going to be good for the city in Norfolk, and so we urge you to support it. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you all for coming down. Okay. Call the roll, please.
I have an ordinance approving a land disposition and development contract with Ocean View Properties, Inc. for two parcels of land consisting of a total of 3.7 acres, more or less, and located at 719 East Ocean View Avenue, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. Public hearing two, please.
Public hearing two is scheduled for this day on the application of Pinewell Station for an amendment to the city's future land use map within the general plan from open space recreation and commercial to multifamily, a text amendment to the city zoning ordinance to create PDR Pinewell Station Residential Plan Development District, and for a change of zoning from C2 corridor commercial and OSP open space preservation to Pinewell Station Residential Plan Development District on property located at 60719 East Ocean View Avenue.
All right. We have Harrison Perrine here to answer questions, along with Mel Price. Now, where are you, Harrison? There you are. Okay. Thank you. I don't know that we have any. Ken Poulsen? Ken? You want to add anything to that?
No, sir.
Okay. We're good. Good. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Mrs. Graves, Mr. Marcus Jones.
Ellis, please.
A fine city manager. My name is Ellis W. James. I reside at 2021 Ken Lake Place, here in the city of Norfolk. I had some concerns early on about the possible loss of open space, but I have been assured by the staff and several council members that after several years of hard work, Mr. City Manager, your staff, as well as council members, have hammered out a project which will certainly protect Bay Oaks Park and will add to the city, especially along the lines of the development that's needed in Ocean View. I'd like to go on record simply as a taxpayer in support of this effort, and I am reassured that there is no loss of open space in this and no damage to Bay Oaks Park. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. You can call the roll.
I have three ordinances, Mr. President, for this item. First is an ordinance to amend the city's general plan so as to change the city's future land use map for property located at 60719 East Ocean View Avenue from open space recreation and commercial to multifamily, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
The second is an ordinance to rezone property located at 60719 East Ocean View Avenue from C2 and OSP to PDR Pinewell Station, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt.
Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye. Just wanted to say thank you to our council for supporting this. This has been probably four years, I think, almost three or four years, we've been working on this. We've had delays along the way, but if you want a good example of how a project that started off looking very blocky was turned into a very nice-looking project that the majority of the community is supporting, this would be a good example of how Mel Price and the developers would continuously go back to the community to get feedback on the project and made a lot of changes along the way, which was some of the roadblock along the way. But I think that we're going to get a great project that's going to bring tax revenue in to an area that has been vacant since I've been on council, bring some more bodies down in Ocean View, which is needed, and/or to get some desired retail that everybody's asking for, and then other opportunities that will come from it, you know, beautifying that section of Ocean View. So, thank you for your support, and thank you for the patience of the developers, and thank you to Mel Price for continuously working with the community on making those changes to the design. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing three, please.
Public hearing three is scheduled for this day to hear comments on approving a land disposition and development contract between the city of Norfolk as seller and Vistacore Advisors LLC as purchaser for four parcels of real property consisting of 1.56 acres, more or less, on property located at Hampton Boulevard and 26th Street in the city.
Call the roll.
And I have an ordinance approving a land disposition and development contract between the city of Norfolk as seller and Vistacore Advisors LLC as purchaser for four parcels of real property consisting of 1.56 acres, more or less, and located at Hampton Boulevard and 26th Street in the city of Norfolk, dispensed with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Protogiru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Win?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
Public hearing four, please.
Public hearing four is scheduled for this day on the application of Andaluzi for a change of zoning from R8 single-family to conditional C1 limited commercial on property located at 2729 Bowden's Ferry Road, and the Planning Commission recommends this for approval by a 5-1 vote.
Okay. There are 11 members of the public signed up to speak on this matter. When I call your name, if you'll come to the podium, identify yourself for the record by giving us your full name, the present home address, and then please limit your remarks to three minutes. Omar Bukris.
Good evening, Mayor Frame, City Council. I'm here representing myself for, well, I'm Omar Bukris. I reside at 617 Baratot Garden in Norfolk. The matter is on, is 2729 Bowden's Ferry Road. It's an old church that I purchased, but let me give you a little bit of history, how we went, the whole process went. Prior to purchasing the church, I've met with the planning, and I was basically guided by them how to process, you know, go through the process. So, I did due diligence. So, what I was asked for me to, first of all, meet with the Civic League, and second of all, to secure parking. I met with Mr. Harris from the Civic League on October 2015, and a member of the Civic League, and I got their blessing. After that, I met with Norfolk Public School Director of Operation and two of his senior staff, and we were told that no issues will be, you know, that we will be given the parking, and it was no issues at all. Then I went back to planning, and I've given them all the information that I had, and after that, basically, based on good faith, I went ahead and purchased the building in the beginning of the year, January. Of course, when I put my application to planning, then the rumors started. People did not understand what I was trying to do there. First of all, it was rumors that I'm going to be serving alcohol, there is a school there, I'm open 24, you know, seven days a week, so forth, so forth, which is not true. It's what we're trying to do there is a venue, if this venue would not have the ABC license, it's any catering that can come to the, to the, to the, that address can bring their own ABC license, or the guest who's having a wedding or whatever event, they can apply for their own ABC. That's number one. So, that's, that's how the rumor started. And then, and then, so of course, during the process, we lost the parking of the school because the school board is working on a, on a, basically a policy, general policy to apply to every, every parking lot that they have to have a standard procedure. So, they haven't said no, but they have not come up with, you know, the agreement. Even though they always asked by the school board to bring, to have a draft from the attorney, the city attorney, and which we did, but after that, that's where they needed to come with, come up with a better agreement for their properties. So, based on that good faith, I went ahead and purchased the building. So far, my investment is in $800,000. My project, you know, my project, by the time I finish, is a million, two million, four projects. It really, it's, if I knew there was going to be a lot of animosity and all this problems, I would not even purchase the building. But, I mean, now it's too late, but, but the whole idea was, for me, was, I thought I was doing a good deed, having, having the project, you know, the railroad proposed project and my project will enhance the neighborhood, will give, you know, will give that neighborhood a better, a better, I guess, better understanding, better community. But, but all this happened, so of course, I lost the, you know, I lost certain battles, but I was blessed enough that, you know, the credit union has agreed to let me use their parking. Of course, now I cannot use it until June because they have to get this, their insurance bond renewal, so that's where they can give me the approval. RJ Electric has approved to give me their parking to be used, so we are going to be using, if allowed, we're going to use RJ Electrical parking as valid parking. So, we are going to have, you know, if we're allowed, that's what we want to plan on doing.
All right. Omar.
Thank you. But I just want to make sure that, you know, it's really, the reason why I purchased this building, because these churches has no future in this, in all over the city. So, we were hoping, you know, it's a good deed.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, members of council, my name is Anthony Page. I live at 3320 Norway Place, Norfolk, Virginia. I want you to know that my comments have nothing to do with religion. It's all about land use. You developed a plan, and now you are considering going against the plan that you adopted. We went through years of preparation for the vision for this neighborhood. People have bought homes, built new homes that back up to this facility. Direct across the street, we have a school, an alternative school. There is no parking lot attached to this property. Anyone who says that they're going to operate a banquet facility knows that even if you go out to service someone, you are going to, you're going to come in late, so the hours that you have on here are deceptive. I'm disappointed that, I'm disappointed that we have worked so hard to turn this neighborhood around. I don't think you would do it in any other community. I don't think you would do it. I mean, these people have sacrificed, these are new homeowners. These are people who have struggled to turn this neighborhood around. We used to hear gunshots in church. This neighborhood is now a bustling neighborhood. College students are on their, they're on their bikes at 12 o'clock at night. This neighborhood is going in the right direction, and I want to remind you in closing, you know ODU plans a new stadium. You know there is a strip mall plan. You know that the life of the Madison School is short-lived, and it will be an ideal commercial property, and that commercial property will require parking. So, all I'm asking is that the council have the courage to carry out your vision. It's not about the gentleman, I don't even know, I can't even say his name. It's not about him. You know, I'm pro-business. I usually don't come down here, and I especially don't come down here on anything that, in opposition to what the Civic League's, now, you've never seen me here opposing anything that the Civic League's done, but I owe it to the people of that community that this council carry out the promise that you made for the Vision 2030. And I believe that you can do it, and I believe you have the courage to do it. But as one council member said to me, "The parking problem in Lambert's Point is a tragedy waiting to happen, and to vote in favor of this because of whatever kind of connections or promises people made would be a real betrayal of the commitment you made to citizens of this community." Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Jack Kavanaugh, 312 College Place, Norfolk, Virginia. I come here in support of Omar from two sand points. One, as a neighbor who's lived with, close to his restaurants for 16 years, 17 years, and secondly, is the president of the Freemason Street Area Association, the Civic League that he is a member of and that he supports. We have never had an issue with any of his restaurants, whether it's noise, or over-inbybing, or tough parties. They've been good, well-run restaurants, including where, when he was the manager of the Pagoda. The city gets a number of calls periodically about weddings that are a little too loud from a music standpoint, and I get the calls myself. We never had those when Omar was the manager of the Pagoda. He knew how to handle the bands, he knew how to handle the people, he knew how to handle the alcohol and the food. So, he's a great manager. Reverend Page talks about parking in Lambert's Point. We have worse parking in Freemason, but it's never been an issue throughout that. We just take care of it, we live with it, and it's good for downtown. I love having him down here as a, as a property owner and as a restaurateur, and I think he'll do a great job up there, too. So, I just wanted to let you know how I support him. Thank you.
Thank you.
I am Robin Bernath. I live at 3711 Bowden's Ferry Road in Norfolk, two doors down from the proposed rental banquet facility. I will just confine my remarks to addressing what's already been said. My husband and I have been following this application for some months now. I would like to point out that this is not a restaurant that is being applied for. It is a facility, a banquet facility for outsiders, not for people from the neighborhood who will rent it and bring their own ABC license to a place that is across the street from a school for children who are at risk. There is a police presence there while the children are loaded and unloaded from the buses. There perhaps are foster children in there. I don't know. I know the principal. She does a fine job, but this is not an appropriate place for a rented banquet facility for outsiders to come and celebrate, 240 of them at a time. We heard Mr. Bukis, Bukris, apply to the Planning Commission. At that time, Mr. Bukris threatened that he would take away his offer to buy the place. if he did not get the immediate approval, the conditional approval. We were also explained to at that meeting that the conditional approval went with Mr. Bukris personally, and if any of the conditions were violated, it would be revoked. This, whatever this is that we have been given, the docket, mentions that this hearing was passed by at the meeting of April the twelfth. That is not the case. It was withdrawn by the applicant on short notice before that meeting. My husband and I came at that time instead of going to hear Emmanuel Axe and Yo-Yo Ma as we had intended to, and various other people came as well, and we were surprised when we signed up to talk to hear that had been withdrawn on short notice. That's the kind of thing we've been following for, for months on this. Again, I'd just like to say, a rental alcohol establishment does not have any place in our working-class neighborhood. It's incomprehensible that anybody would think that such a facility would not lower the property values, would not increase the crime of this neighborhood, and it's also incomprehensible how anybody can think that there is no future for churches in this neighborhood. Thank you very much.
Peter Bernath?
Churches are vacant all over the place.
Saint Forty-three Church is empty.
My name is Peter Bernath, three-seven-eleven Bodens Ferry Road in Norfolk. My wife and I would like to draw the council's attention to several outstanding errors in this application. This application was drawn by the applicant at the last minute from the council agenda on April twelfth. We found this out as we signed in to speak, and we'd already mailed a, emailed a letter to Barclay when highlighting errors in the council-supporting documents. A month later, this application yet, has yet another erroring with more errors. So I'll just offer some highlights from the first letter. The site description, the zoning application claims this church has been vacant for some time. Actually, the church was in continual use until the Riddell-for-sale sign advertising a commercial property went up recently. Congregation removed their property immediately before this. The surrounding area, east is Norfolk Public School property, Madison School. Students are loaded and unloaded each day of the school year with Norfolk City Police presence. School buses convey the students to and from the school twice a day and block Bodens Ferry Road. It's not appropriate to have a party establishment serving alcoholic beverages after eleven AM adjacent to a school with students on-site from eight AM to four PM. The rezoning application states that the parking required be less than the previous use. This is simply not correct. The traditional neighborhood has no capacity to accommodate such an enormous non-resident parking demand. The zoning application considers that the proposed establishment should not have a negative impact on the surrounding neighborhood. This is both of incorrect and offensive. On nine AM on thirteenth of April, an associate of the applicant used the sledgehammer to destroy the church's brick sign. The rubble sat on the church lawn for weeks. The smashed notice board might still be there. This certainly changed the exterior appearance of the structure as prohibited in the conditional rezoning. It's a matter of concern that the applicant proposes to lease this proposed establishment to third-party promoters. The planning commission explained to us that the conditional approval is to the application personally, not to third-party renters. With respect to lack of parking, the two businesses mentioned in the document don't provide thirty-five parking spaces during business hours. RG Electric is blocks away from the church, and the credit union has already posted an agreement with Small Barbecue for the use of their Monday, for the use of their lot Monday to Friday after five PM and at all other times. There is no such alcoholic entertainment establishment with its associated crime in this single traditional family neighborhood, nor is one needed for rental to non-residents. The noise, traffic congestion, disruption to schoolchildren and the working people would begin the decline of this fragile but very valuable traditional neighborhood. I urge you to vote against this.
Thank you. John Small?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, ladies and gentlemen. My name is John Small, twenty-seven-hundred Hampton Boulevard, Norfolk, Virginia, Smalls Everybody here knows why I'm against this thing. I've sent numerous letters out. I've been in the real estate commercial development for thirty-five years. I, I have some real oppositions in regards to this property and, and its use, but my real reasons for being in this fight is, is, most of you don't know this, but I was raised in Lambert's Point in my hardware store, which I did for the first thirty-five years of my life. So I've helped Lambert's Point, I've seen Lambert's Point grow, I've seen Lambert's Point change. My second thing is my son Logan has lived in Lambert's Point for over four years now, working the store and owning the restaurant, and, and he wants to buy a house in this neighborhood. We even had a contract about five weeks ago, which we withdrew because we didn't know what was gonna happen here. So I'm not gonna spend a whole lot of time, or any more time with wasting your time on, on my thoughts on the thing. You pretty much know my position, and I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Thank you. John Miranda Waddell?
Good evening. I'm Miranda Waddell. My address is twelve-sixty-three West Thirty-Eighth Street. Good evening, council and mayor. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to speak. I request that the zoning change be denied for this property. The property is currently located in a neighborhood where parking is already at a premium. There are times when there's a family barbecue or even a Lambert's Point reunion. The street is already small, so if you're parking on that street, you have to close your, your window, your mirrors already so that your car mirrors don't get side-swiped because if people are parking on both sides of the street, it's already tight. This proposed banquet hall is also going to operate during school hours, and it was my understanding, reading the application, that there was going to be an ABC, that the ABC application is also attached to the application for this proposed banquet hall. In granting an ABC license to operate from eleven to eleven at night, school hours are going on, and while we would like people to think that we, we're gonna make a good decision and not drink and drive, statistics show that that's not the case, and you're setting it up so that there's gonna be an accident more than likely during the operating hours. Again, I request that this be denied.
Deborah Blunt?
Good evening, council. Good evening, Mayor Fram. My name is Deborah Blunt. I live at twelve-fifty-six West Twenty-seventh Street in Norfolk, Lambert's Point neighborhood. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to come up here and speak today and to be heard. My family and I, including two small boys, are against the rezoning of the property at twenty-seven-twenty-nine Bodens Ferry Road. We struggled and saved to have a home in a neighborhood that we thought would be a very quiet, neighborly place. So we chose Lambert's Point as this place that was quiet, and it still is as of, at this point. And to hear about the proposed banquet hall and entertainment facility with alcohol is very, very unsettling. Not to mention that it's within walking distance. I'm about maybe five houses down from the facility. So I'm asking you, please, do not allow this banquet hall to be placed in our quiet neighborhood. Thank you.
Carol Crane?
Good evening, Mayor Fram and council. My name is Carol Crane. I live at twelve-forty-six West Thirty-Ninth Street. I have been a member of Lambert's Point for fifty-five years now. I was worked at Lambert's Point when I was one years old. I have raised, I have been married for thirty-six years. I got married in Lambert's Point. I attended the church, North United Methodist Church, for over twenty years. I raised my children there, and this is not a Christian thing, but I feel that it'll be wrong for you all to allow such establishment as that to take part in that church. For family reasons, it's a house right next door to it that's a family there, and I'm quite sure they will have to be moving. There's families all around there. I have lost many of my family members' homes in the neighborhood as it is. I think I'm probably the last of my family that's still in Lambert's Point because of zoning situations out there, which I think has been a good thing, but I don't feel that this establishment will be good for the neighborhood. Madison School is across the street. We are surrounded by ODU students. I don't think that, that'll be a good spot for them as it is. When the young freshmen are coming in town, they're already looking for places to get alcohol. I don't think that'll be a good establishment as far as for them. And my children, it's, it's hurting them to see that their church home is being turned into such an establishment. If the man, Mr. Abdonali Lucy, he feels that our churches in Lambert's Point need to be turned into something better, but I think if he, he can find, come up with another decision to make that a better establishment for someplace to put the children, we can use a senior home. It's a lot he can turn into that, that church, and it's a beautiful church, but I can't see it being a alcohol establishment. If it was just catering, it'd be a different story, but to bring alcohol in it, next you be bringing drugs there, so that's all I have to say. Thank you for allowing me to speak.
Albert Hurd?
That's unfair. That's an unfair problem.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council. I wanna start out by saying, Mr. Mayor, thank you for your service to the city of Norfolk for all these years. I think you've done a great job.
Thank you.
My name is Albert Hurd, Jr. I reside at twelve-sixty-three West Thirty-Eighth Street. I'm a proud resident of Lambert's Point in the city of Norfolk. My grandmother, Nana Harris, owned property at forty-fifth and Parker, which is now a tennis court. She was ran out by intermittent domain. I don't have a problem with ODU, but in staying with PH four, I'm against it because of the limited parking. We have college students that stay in homes in the area, and there's multiple numbers that stay in those homes who have vehicles and park on the street, and when you start, we have residents that live there that have multiple vehicles that park their narrow streets, and being familiar with that area, when you start renting out places and having people, untold numbers of people coming to park, they're looking for places to park, so then they look, park in front of your house and wherever they can find, and I just wanna just let it be known that I'm against PH four. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that concludes the list of folks who have signed up to speak on the matter. Anybody have anything to say, or should we just call the roll? Can we?
Mr. Harris, I think was here just.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, Mr. Harris, excuse me. That's me. I'm sorry. They said you wanted to speak last.
You must don't want me to speak, don't you, right?
I'm glad to.
Good evening, London City Council, Mayor Fram. My name is Thomas Harris, and I am the president of the Lambert's Point Civic League, the president of the reunion committee, and the president of the Lambert's Point Neighborhood Block Watch. Let me take this back just a little bit. Back in ninety-four, when Lambert's Point was struggling, nobody wanted to move in Lambert's Point, no one wanted to take and clean up Lambert's Point, we, I elected a block watch program that went to work to clean it up. We did. All the people that you heard spoke tonight didn't put a hand to lift a piece of dirt to clean it up. The first house behind the church, the old church, was an eight-family apartment, which was a nuisance to the neighborhood when they did have church there on Sunday any day of the week. We worked long with police department and codes to get rid of that. We cleaned that up, and next to that was a wake-up lot. We cleaned all of it, we put new houses up there. Now, we, sure, we elected to vote, say yes, for they go there to have the banquet hall go there because it's not gonna be no alcohol served in there, the hours of operation is not put from Thursday to Saturdays, and I have letters here on it to present to you.
There will be alcohol.
We voted yes. When Small came to us, asked us both for him for alcohol and amusement, we say yes. He got here at twenty-seventh and Hampton Boulevard, right across from the school. Right there at thirty, at thirty-seventh Street, you got thirty-seventh Street Den that have alcohol, open door in the school time. CVS Pharmacy right there has it, alcohol. There's a shell had alcohol. Years ago, there was, right at the school was Old Robin Confectionery. They sold alcohol. So we say yes. The church is the people. Without the church, without the people, it's a building. Mr. Omar can just tear the building down and it got no, you got nothing but a wake-up lot. All the people you had speaking tonight do not attend the Civic League meeting, they don't support very much the net that goes on in Lambert's Point. Sure, we have a problem with parking, we have a problem of drinking. Nobody is taking a stand against that. So I voted yes for Mr. Omar to have the business to go there at Lambert's Point, and I do have some letters I'd like to give to you. And in closing, I'd like to say, bring our shoppers down.
Can I ask a couple of questions, may I?
Sure.
The hour showing here.
Eleven to eleven.
It says eleven, it opened nine to twelve and eleven to eleven, seven days a week. Is that right?
They changed it.
Didn't they change that?
You have to look at the first list.
Oh, okay.
I believe that you all have in your Dropbox the, the three slides we were gonna try to pop up and, and talk to you about briefly downstairs, and you're informal. The hours have changed, and the ordinance require, is, limits it to eleven AM to eleven PM Thursday, Friday, Saturday, and then it's closed Sunday through Wednesday. The other change is that the ordinance requires thirty-five off-street parking spaces to be under lease, whether they're managed through valet parking or, or not is not specified, but unless there are thirty-five parking spaces under lease, the business cannot operate. And then finally.
Do you know if they are under lease?
Pardon?
Do you know if there are, if they are?
We have information that leases are forthcoming.
They're not, we don't have them yet, though?
But we don't have them. That's why the, the requirement is written that they have, they have to have thirty-five, Omar has to have thirty-five spaces under lease at any time he wants to operate. And, and if there's another place that is, he's able to get spaces, such as at, at the Madison School, that would be acceptable, it's just he has to have those, they have to be under lease.
George, could those spaces be anywhere? I mean, they just have to be under lease?
That's correct.
I mean, so if he had them, I mean, a mile away, that, that would still be okay?
That would be okay, if, you know, assuming, the, the assumption is that they would use valet parking in, in that kind of situation.
Can I ask, was to ask with the parking, when the church was open during its heyday, I assume that it had.
No parking.
No parking still.
No.
Where did everybody park? In the neighborhood, can the neighborhood tell me where they parked?
They parked on the yard.
They walked to church.
No, they parked on the yard.
Yep.
There were not many.
A lot of people walked to church.
They didn't have a couple dozen. Okay, thanks.
So we have it's Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, and the hours are?
Eleven to eleven.
Eleven to eleven. So he, if he's running from operating business at eleven, I mean, most of them are gonna be afternoon, I would assume, four or five at night. I mean, I don't know, does he have to have, where would he park if, like RG Electric, for instance, is operating for the credit union or wherever?
I, I really.
But he can't operate unless he's got that.
That's correct. That's correct.
George, the special, there's a special exception involved with this?
Yes, sir.
That would permit him, I take it, even though he says he doesn't intend to? He could apply for an ABC permit there?
The ordinance on special exception does not prohibit him from holding an ABC license.
So, if he wanted to, we'll say the business didn't go well, and he wanted to apply for an ABC permit, he could do that?
That is correct. Yes, sir.
Or if he were the catering entity, he could apply for an ABC license there, just as any other catering entity could have an ABC license there, correct?
Yes, ma'am. That's correct.
But at the present time, if I want to rent out the space, is that correct? I'm responsible for getting the ABC license, correct?
It could be you, or it could be your caterer. Either one could hold that license.
George, is there, there's a brewery close to there?
Old Mariner?
Yeah, when did that open?
Just recently.
Yeah.
About six months ago.
And there was no opposition from anybody with that?
No. But the brewery wasn't.
George, how many people were permitted in the facility at one time?
According to the size, I believe it's 240 at any one time.
It says 240 total capacity and 242 seats.
That's based on, quite honestly, that's based on the building code and number of exits and how far they are apart.
Okay. I'm sorry. Okay, we ready?
Let me say a couple of things. Number one, when I heard that this was coming, I sort of compared it to Freemason Abbey. And Freemason Abbey actually bought property for parking, and they have adequate parking. But I think about Norfolk United Methodist Church, there's a couple of things I think about. Number one, the majority of this council voted to allow an ABC license less, a little bit more than a thousand feet from their new location on Halsted Avenue. I voted against it. And when I think about, you know, some of the old parishioners there, Miss Nelliffe Foote, and some of my good friends who used to belong to that church, I think it's just unconscionable to try to bring this in. We've had guys that come down from Freemason Harbor, you know, downtown. You guys don't live within that neighborhood. You know, you don't have a dog in the fight, you know? And just to come down and say that, you know, there's a good, you know, operation now and with, that's fine. That's good. But these people live there, and there's nowhere else except in African-American community would you come down and try to do something like this. You would not go into a white community and try to do something like this. Hate to put things in racial form, but this is not a post-racial society. And when you come, and Omar, I consider my friend, probably until after the night, but I think, and I'm sorry you put the investment in there, because that's a heck of an investment to kind of walk away from wanting what's going to happen to it. But I've been going to Lambres Point since 1965. There's nothing you can tell me about Robbins. You can nothing tell me about Thirpway. You can't tell me about Chinese. There's nothing you can tell me about Lambres Point that I don't already know. And when you talk about a civic league, how many people were at the civic league that voted, you know? Give me a number. Tell me you had 50 people who were at the civic league and voted. Don't tell me you got the civic league, you know, backing, and you might have had four or five people there, you know?
So, that's what?
I present that we have voted for five.
No, at the meeting, that voted at that meeting.
Okay.
You know? So, I'm just saying, we had a strong representation of people who took a chance on Lambres Point. I remember when they had a Chinese lounge on 25th Street in Lambres Point. So, you can't tell me about Lambres Point. And I see where it was and where it is now, and I think it's unconscionable that this council allows this facility to go there because of parking, alcohol, and other things.
So, I'm going to have to answer in good rebuttal to my good friend, Mr. Riddick. I actually have been working with the civic league, which is African-American. Regularly. They have had multiple visits by Omar, who has presented. They have had votes that have been closed after the developer left to vote on each argument that they've asked Omar to answer. The number one complaint I've heard over and over again is parking. This will be valet parking. As we've heard, they cannot open unless they have adequate parking. This situation about alcohol, I find very curious, having sat here when we have approved CVS, where you can buy alcohol and take it off property directly next to the school, and we have multiple other establishments. This is not a establishment that you can buy alcohol and take it off property. And when we speak to the testimony by people that know Omar, where their location is is not important. It's the reputation that certain businesses have maintained. This property, we have a role as a city. We have to keep our eyes on this property. If at any time we think that this is going to be a detriment to the neighborhood, then we have the opportunity to change that. But to keep this property out, and I have to sadly, strongly disagree with the woman who said that this will easily be picked up by another church. Obviously, they have not been down to Park Place lately, where we have the most beautiful churches that are in state of disarray, because frankly, these churches are not being populated. And that's why this church was languished for a number of years. It's a sad commentary, but we have a beautiful structure that can be maintained with a huge investment in it to maintain this neighborhood. And as great as things have been happening in Lambres Point, we've got bigger issues in Lambres Point than this church, and that is exactly the Old Dominion invasion into our neighborhood and the alcohol and the partying that is going around. So, I ask that all of you that are in opposition, especially the church members, do what you can to help us with that situation, which I think is our biggest threat in this neighborhood.
Okay. All right, so do you want to speak, Angela?
This one is very difficult for me, because unlike Terry, I was not in the meetings, but I've gotten phone calls about it and briefly spoken to a few members of the civic league about it. And the funny thing about campaigning is that, for me, my phone number went to 6,000 people, and quite a few of them from Lambres Point called me, and they called about this issue. And I suggested to all of them that called that they get involved with the civic league, because that civic league is the, it's kind of like the nucleus of the neighborhood. But that being said, just because they're not members of the civic league doesn't mean, at least to me, that their opinions or their voices are any less relevant or important, because they are property owners there, they live there, as folks have said, they raise their families there. I think that a lot of them, a lot of the people who have opposed it have a lot in common with the members of the civic league. And so, instead of, you know, just getting up in arms when there is a situation, perhaps working with the members of the civic league on going to address the entire issues of the neighborhood. That being said, the thing that concerns me the most is the parking. And I know that Terry has dealt with parking. I know that we hear about it in task force meetings, and I've seen, being a former Old Dominion student, I've seen folks, students park and walk. I mean, it just gives me heartburn that 200 people could come into this neighborhood, and there's only 35 required parking spaces for them to be. And the rest of the time, it's up to them to find a spot to park. And that, that just gives me, you know, that gives me, that gives me heartburn. Mr. Riddick and I don't often agree on the alcohol, because we've probably voted differently a lot of times on alcohol, but churches are special to me personally. And bringing alcohol into a church, you know, like aside from communion and stuff, but bringing alcohol into a church, just, it, I know that Omar is a good operator. I know that, and I know that Omar is a good person, and he makes great food for us when he makes us dinner. And I know that, I believe he is a man of great integrity, but bringing alcohol into a church, just, I don't know, it just kind of, it just kind of does something for me, or it does something to me. And so, this one's hard, but I would say to all of the people who came in opposition, become members of the civic league. Work with the people in the civic league. Work with the neighborhood community, that all of you want the same thing, and that is for your neighborhood to be the very best neighborhood that it possibly can be. That's what everybody is down here, you know, trying to say, just in different ways. So, work with your neighborhoods, work with your civic league, and this parking thing still gets me, and I don't think I can really get past that. You know, the alcohol is one thing, but this parking, bringing this many people into a neighborhood, I really, really struggle with that, because we talked earlier about creating issues that another council will have to deal with when we were talking about our retirement fund. And I think that create, that this situation with parking is going to create another issue that while Paul will retire and Barclay will retire, and they may be dead and gone, we'll still be here, and folks from Lambres Point.
Taking all the hits today, aren't you, Frank?
Will come down here and talk to us about, about parking. So, that's what I have.
If you don't hurry up, they may be dead.
Old grizzly and dead. I mean, he is.
Old and grizzly. See what you mean? They'll be talking about you pretty soon, Mr. Mayor.
Hey, okay, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I just wanted to just make one little comment about parking. It was about two months ago when we had our controversial vote on Krista's, and we had the same issue with parking, and people supported that even though there wasn't enough parking spots. So, I just want to remind everybody about that.
We, I support it. Krista's on a totally different premise than parking.
Right, no, I'm just saying parking is.
You know, parking was not even, that was not even a concern of mine. That was a totally different issue.
Okay.
I have two ordinances for this item. First is an ordinance to rezone property located at 2729 Bowdoin's Ferry Road from R8 to conditional C1. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
No.
Ms. Johnson?
No.
Mr. Protegeru?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
No.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Ew. This one might take him out.
That's a, that's a no.
That's not a vote.
Look, I was afraid it was going to come to this, and I have really.
It's hard.
Struggled with this matter.
It's hard.
First of all, I have huge regard for Omar, and if there was any reason even to consider this matter, it's because of Omar and his ability to run this, you know, facility in a way that I think would be, you know, he would try to be acceptable in the community. I know he would work hard. I met with Omar after the last time, and I said, Omar, if you will limit your hours and come back here and, you know, do away with this notion about alcohol and, you know, come back with signed agreements for parking, then I could, you know, I'd try to support it. The special exception is still here. I mean, if you don't make it over there, and I know you've got an investment, I think you're just, you know, I mean, and if, you know, to then apply for an ABC permit, you know, I could see that happening. The thing that I, again, the parking is, you know, you don't have any signed agreements for parking that I'm aware of. Your whole idea was to get parking across the street that wasn't there. I've been in this church. I mean, I went to the minister's daughter's wedding. I have, there is, I mean, it's not just, you know, like a little or something, there is no parking. Zoning is, for the most part, is considered a social contract, and there is a contract that we have with this community. And if you're going to change that contract, I think the first thing you do is make sure you don't do any harm. And to have a church which basically, I mean, like one of the services I went in there, there were a handful of people in there. Most of them walked. That's the reason the church closed. I mean, the congregation was not there. I mean, there wasn't a big impact on the community. And they came in on Sundays. You're going to have music in there Thursdays and Fridays. I think there will be a noise issue. I can probably, you know, try to accommodate that, but 35 spaces, I take it, George, if he wanted to lease himself some spaces from his other restaurants, he could do that, and that would satisfy the requirement, even though that was downtown. And that's right? You know, so, and I don't know how many people are going to, I doubt that a dozen people will actually, to be honest, if everybody wants to be honest with themselves up here, will, you know, will valet park when they can park a block away in the neighborhood and just walk in? I mean, I don't, you know, you can talk about valet parking, but they will be in the neighborhood, you know? And I mean, there isn't any question about it. And I objected to the last, you know, to the one down at Ocean View largely, you know, not only because of the Navy objective, but parking, there weren't but 12 spaces there. So, I mean, I have struggled. The other thing that I feel a little bit is the city is a little bit complicit in this, in that we, you know, basically tried to show him how to get this thing done, when I don't know that, I mean, I'm totally economic development people, actually may have showed him the facility and then tried to suggest he made this, you know, this investment. I mean, I understand all that. I, that's very troubling to me that somehow they could say, well, we can get all this done. I think most, I mean, based on that, I think Omar made the purchase, you know, but I, but I mean, I just, I've been there, in my mind's eye, I cannot see how, where all those people are going to park. If they don't park in people's, you know, almost in people's driveways, and I think we are just creating a situation in the future where we're going to have lots of issues here, so. So, anyway, so I'm going to vote no.
Fails on a tie vote, Mr. President.
R1, please.
Paul, can I be excused?
Yeah, please.
R1 is an ordinance granting a special exception to permit the resumption of a non-conforming retail sales establishment named The Coffee Tree and a historic building on property located at 2815 Colonial Avenue, and by 7-0, a planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance.
The proponent is here, the applicant to answer questions, Gabrielle Rapasardi? She's here. Okay.
And adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R2?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages named Elixir on property located at 257 Granby Street, and by 7-0, a planning commission recommends approval.
And Rosemary Everett is here to answer questions. Okay. All right, call the roll.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R3?
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a daycare home known as Ms. Rosebud's Family Day Home on property located at 1439 Melwood Court, and by 7-0, a planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
I have a question. Are the hours, George, if you could, are these hours correct from 6:00 a.m. to 12:00 midnight?
They are.
Yes.
Covering.
Pardon me?
Covering first and second shift.
So, people who work early morning and who get off late night?
That's right.
Okay.
Seven days a week?
Yeah.
That's good.
That's good, that's good.
We need more.
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R4.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit mixed uses on property located at 8131 Shore Drive. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
And Albert Viola is here to answer questions. Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just wanna thank the developer, Albi, who continues to invest in Ocean View with projects like this. This was, uh, supported heavily by the Civic League, and, uh, thank you. You're bringing, he's bringing mixed Houston. There's residential above retail on this site, and so we're excited about that opportunity. So thanks for doing that. Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R5.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a commercial drive-through for Wells Fargo Bank ATM on property located at 4231 East Little Creek Road. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
And Mr. Sowers is here to answer questions. Okay, thank you.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R6.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the sale of alcoholic beverages for off-premises consumption at an establishment known as Me Colivata Latin Store on property located at 1301 East Little Creek Road, Suites 4 and 5. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R7.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as The Holiday Inn on property located at 1570 North Military Highway. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R8.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named St. Germain on property located at 255 Granby Street. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R9.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as The Art Center on property located at 740 Duke Street, Suite 100. By six zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Wait a minute, I've got, um, was Angela Tilly there? Okay, all right.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R10.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Luce on property located at 245 Granby Street. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
You know, I just have to make a comment. We've got one, two, three, four, uh, I guess three of these special exceptions for existing establishments. It, I just think this special exception process is just so antiquated. It just drives me crazy. Um, so much work for you all for businesses that are thriving and doing great. I mean, when are we gonna get this figured out?
Marcus?
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye. R11?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named Zeke's Beans and Bowls on property located at 800 Granby Street. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R12.
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an entertainment establishment with alcoholic beverages known as Meal Bar Mexican Restaurant on properties located at 4201 and to 4205 Granby Street. And for both these items, planning commission recommends approval by seven zero vote. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
I just, a quick question. Uh, when they, when they have to reapply for this, what's the fee to do this? Just. Thanks, Terry, for reminding.
It's, it's the same fee. Um, but in, just to follow up, none of these are ones that are coming to you because there was a sunset clause. These are all coming to you because there is a change in their business operations or a change in managers or, or something of that nature.
That's exactly what I'm talking about.
Right, and it's, it's how much? Five hundred and fifty dollars? Which is, what is?
Three cent?
Three fifty-five. So every time.
Those of you that all campaigned on making it better for our small businesses might wanna keep this in mind.
Well, I, you know, I'd like to, we could debate that.
Yeah, I, I'm happy to.
About whether, I mean, we have one of the, we have one of the better handles on, on the, the sale of alcohol and beverages, at least control over it than anybody else in the Commonwealth. There's a history to this about why we have special exceptions. And George, you, okay, you can go back, but I mean, other communities don't have what we have and wouldn't die to have it, quite honestly.
That's why these people that are grandfathered in will not get off it for one second. Because they, to get a license for it, the ABC board is impossible, almost, to get them to pull it.
And a couple of what these things are are just expansions of existing restaurants, right? I mean, so.
Yes, yes, sir.
That's why they're having to go into other spaces and they're expanding it, and that's, uh, but I, I wouldn't wanna surrender.
Changing the issue.
There was a time in Ocean View was full of this stuff.
Yeah.
And that's what, that was the whole reason behind the special exception.
No, I understand, I understand that. But if they're, but if they're changing just like a manager or something, and we know it's a clean restaurant, I don't know if the, why, I agree with Terry, why, or if you're rearranging your table layout, that you've gotta pay three hundred and fifty-five dollars to come downtown to get a new.
I don't even understand why we.
Yeah. So that, and those two examples, the change in management now no longer requires a special exception, while the change in an owner does. And likewise, the change in table arrangement no longer requires an amendment. So, so that we have, uh, lessened it, uh, and, and so that I, I'm sure that there could be some movement. And I don't think what you're talking about is ending the program. Right. But whether there are some that are coming that you really don't need to consider.
Maybe we could look at, in committee, at some point, what other cities do and how it compares to what we do and, and the fees and things of that nature.
And go back and look at the history, why we have this.
Do a comparative.
Oh, blooming, I know the history and I'm supportive of.
I totally get the history, and I understand that. But, you know, I worked with Frank on this too. And I think that, you know, this, what we all saw this, it all went through planning. He was unanimously approved. Now it all came through us. All of that work that could be spent better at going out to these establishments and actually making sure they're doing what we've asked them to do. I really think it's redundant, and I know we've made some changes, but I think we got a long way to go. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not denying the fact that you all used this and you used it effectively in Ocean View. But I, I also think now we're in a new age, and why not use it more for, um, making sure that people are complying than doing the paperwork and making it onerous for a business?
Figure out a way for the planning commission to hand this stuff out instead of us.
Yes, absolutely.
George, why are you added?
Sorry, George. I knew you were just here.
As long as we're giving you, you know, you know, things to do. This off-street parking thing, that would allow somebody to satisfy an off-street parking requirement, you know, miles from the restaurant or the facility, is, there's gotta be, you gotta have a perimeter or something. I mean, you can't, to suggest that you could have off-street parking a couple miles away and that would qualify, like you just said, here is, is, I mean, there's no qual, it's no requirement at all.
I hear you loud and clear, sir.
I mean, some, it's gotta be in reason, within reasonable proximity, otherwise, you know, it just, you know, you know what I mean?
Yes, sir. We hear you.
Okay, where, what, what, where?
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
12A is an ordinance granting a pedestrian commercial overlay development certificate with waivers to permit construction of an addition to the existing building on property located at 4201 to 4205 Granby Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R13.
An ordinance granting a special exception to permit the operation of a microbrewery named Benchtop Brewing Company on property located at 1121 to 1129 Bosbane Avenue. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Hi, I'm sorry, I've gone to sleep. Mr. Tennant, did you want to add anything to that? I mean, you won, okay. You win anyway, okay. Okay, sorry. R14?
An ordinance granting a special exception authorizing the operation of an eating and drinking establishment named El Ray, number two, on property located at 849 East Little Creek Road. By seven zero vote, planning commission recommends approval.
Mr. Louis Zapata, are you here? Okay, good luck.
Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R15.
An ordinance accepting with appreciation forty thousand dollars from Marathon Development Group, Inc. and appropriating and authorizing the expenditure of forty thousand dollars for construction of a dog walk area at 416 Granby Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
I'm gonna vote aye and subtract that forty thousand dollars from the money he owes us when we closed York Street. Oh, for him to build those condos that didn't go up. So whatever the difference is, he still owes us. I vote aye. Yeah, but you know, we gave, we closed York Street, he got paid by the federal government. So, uh, he probably still owes us a couple of dollars. I vote aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R16?
An ordinance permitting 519 Front Street LLC to encroach into the right-of-way at 519 Front Street with the existing building, drain pipes, and a concrete pad. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R17.
An ordinance granting Paul Philian permission to encroach into the right-of-way at 114 East 25th Street, approximately 155 square feet, for the purpose of outdoor dining and approving the terms and conditions of the encroachment agreement. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R18, please.
Mr. President, there's been a motion to continue this matter generally.
Okay, then the motion is to continue generally. Is anybody here on R18? No, okay, go ahead.
Continue generally, Ms. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R19.
An ordinance establishing, establishing certain public areas and streets of the city of Norfolk as the festival area and setting forth the regulations applicable to such festival area for the Norfolk Harbor Fest 2016 celebration. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Mr. Wynn? Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye, R20.
An ordinance closing certain city-owned docks to public use during Norfolk Harbor Fest 2016 celebration. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt, Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R22? An ordinance approving a right-of-entry permitting the New Hope Church of God in Christ to go upon and use that certain city-owned property numbered and designated as 616, 618, and 620 West 35th Street. Dispense with the charter requirement for reading the ordinance and adopt. Ms. Graves?
Aye.
Ms. Johnson?
Aye.
Mr. Riddick?
Aye.
Mr. Smigel?
Aye.
Dr. Whibley?
Aye.
Mr. Wynn?
Aye.
Mr. Frame?
Aye.
R22? An ordinance accepting $40,608.48 from the Schools and Libraries Division of the Universal